Come on, sort of pop, let's go.
Please.
Item 20 is a conditional use permit appeal 3096-2015. A conditional use permit in the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District was approved to allow on-sale alcohol within 500 feet of a sensitive use at the northeast corner of West 85th Street and South Louise Avenue.
Good evening, Diane DeCoyer with Planning. This is a conditional use appeal. It was heard last month in August at Planning Commission. The applicant for this is Bryant Solberg. The location is the northeast corner of West 85th and South Louise Avenue. It is approximately 3.15 acres. The request is the RE3 form to allow on-sale alcohol within 500 feet of sensitive use. The applicant would like to occupy two tenant spaces in a future multi-tenant retail building. Each of the tenant spaces would contain an on-sale alcohol beverage establishment. For an on-sale alcohol establishment, the conditional use permit standard is fourfold. One, the on-sale alcohol establishment must have all parking spaces within the onsite parking lot in close proximity and facing the entrance. Two, lighting may be considered to provide illumination for security and safety of parking access areas. On-site lighting plans must be submitted for review and approval. Three, soundproofing may be considered to prevent noise and vibrations from penetrating into surrounding properties or leased space. And four, a security management plan shall be provided to the police department. The appeal by neighbors had the following concerns: safety for children, traffic in the area, and neighborhood ambiance. There are traffic counts that should have been included within your packet, and I'll just give a brief overview of that. This is based on trips per 1,000 square foot at the PM peak times. For video lottery, it's 13.43. For a fast food restaurant, it's 52.40. For a gasoline service station, it's 97.14. For comparisons to the video lottery, again, 13.43 is a bar without full-service food. That's 11.34. Printing and express ship store is 12.27. A walk-in bank is 12.13. And a movie rental store is 13.60. This information was provided by Heath Hoff Teaser with Traffic Engineering. If the conditional use permit tonight is denied, then items 26 through 29 must also be denied. So I can answer any questions if you might have.
Diane, thank you. Danny, can I go to the folks in the audience first and ask them for comments?
Yes.
Thank you. Folks, if there's anybody who wants to talk about this item, please just come forward now. Again, we just ask you to introduce yourself to the people of our town. If you can keep your comments to five minutes or less, we'd appreciate that. As well as, if there's items that you want to go before or against something, we'd ask you to listen to the prior comments and try not to be repetitive in those comments. So, welcome.
Thank you. Charlotte Miller. My husband and I live in a 26-family twin home association, 18 owner occupied, known as Falcon Ridge, directly west across Louise Avenue of the property in question. Also attending tonight are several of our association members, who I'd like to ask to stand now. Additionally, 26 Falcon Ridge neighbors, owners and renters alike, have signed this rebuttal against on-sale liquor being within 500 feet of our community. While I have absolutely no legal background, nor have I sought legal counsel in this matter, I've made an effort to approach the topic from a legal standpoint rather than emotional. I learned while reading the summary of the Supreme Court of South Dakota Decision Number 25897 dated September 2011 that the Supreme Court, or that the state of South Dakota holds nearly all the powers of the gaming industry. The summary referred to South Dakota Codified Law 427A64. So, of course, my next computer search was SDCL 427A64, which addresses, quote, "additional criteria for on-sale alcohol beverage licenses in video lottery licensed establishments," end quote. Councilmembers and Mr. Mayor, I certainly intend no impression otherwise, because I'm sure that you're very apprised of these laws. I simply found them instructional for my background. Therefore, the items that municipalities may consider are the following: one, the number of establishments currently licensed for video lottery; number two, the proximity of the business to other establishments established for video lottery; three, the type of business and manner in which the applicant proposes to operate it; four, the location of the business in relation to other businesses' residential areas or activities within the same general area; five, the extent to which minors frequent a business connected to the one proposed; six, the effect the proposed business has on economic development. Let's examine number four: the location of the business in relation to other businesses' residential areas or activities within the same general area. Eleven years ago, when we moved there, the property in question was a residential acreage. The owners died. The house was sold and moved off property, and approximately eight years ago, the empty property was zoned commercial. About the same time, the 96 Rosecrest Townhomes were built just north of the property in question. The proposed strip mall, as shown in the plot by Kelo on a broadcast on August 27th entitled "Casino Going into 85th and Louise Strip Mall," is within 100 feet. Yes, 100 feet of townhomes with numerous children inhabiting them. The reference to activities in number four, the applicant is asking to use the exact same private road for their business as the townhomes whose children meet the school bus at Rambler Place in Louise Avenue. In this case, I believe activity could easily cause safety concerns for children. Still on number four: the location of the business in relation to other businesses. There are no other retail businesses within a half a mile, any direction, of the subject property. Moreover, there are six empty storefronts between 76th and 78th on Louise, never occupied, still have the construction gravel floors since being built about six years ago. If these strip mall bays closer to more rooftops can't be filled, I'm of the opinion that it will be difficult to fill the spots on the subject property, except, of course, a casino, which is already supposedly leased. Opinion again, but it seems to me that a casino in a remote location with easy access to major streets is ripe for robberies. Number five: the extent to which minors frequent a business connected to the one proposed. In this case, it's not a business connected to the property that's a concern, it's the minors' homes that are connected. Again, on-sale alcohol and children in homes within 100 feet just do not mix. I realize that you are the body of last resort. Normally, the city council will enact laws, and in cases like tonight also act as the judicial branch of government. I think the request for on-sale liquor at 85th and Louise clearly does not meet standard of two of the six items a municipality may consider according to South Dakota law: one, proximity to residential, and two, proximity to minors. In education, my background, if a student is unable to answer two of six questions, his or her numerical score is 66 percent, i.e., no pass. I also urge you to consider implications to all developers and builders if you should allow this variance. If you allow this variance, it clearly, in my opinion, tells developers and builders to go ahead with whatever project they want, wherever they want, even if it clearly violates, in this case, two of the six items decided by the South Dakota State Supreme Court. I also ask you to follow through with the ordinances that this body, you, previously passed, that there must be a quarter-mile setback from major intersections for business entrances. According to my 25-foot tape measure, it's 295 feet from 85th and Louise to the entrance for this proposed business, a little shy of the 1,320 feet for a quarter-mile. So, now we have two state laws and one city ordinance being violated if this variance is approved. Please, do not pass the request for on-sale liquor at 85th and Louise. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Miller. Counsel, I did let that go on longer just because it seemed like she was representing her neighborhood. She had the petition, so that's why I did that. I hope you understand. Folks, anybody else want to engage the counsel on this topic? Welcome.
My name is Jeff Gould. I live on 85th Street. I was at a planning and zoning meeting when this lady spoke, and I couldn't help but hear what she said. And so I thought I would say something at the time, and I thought I would repeat it again tonight. So, this is the deal. I mean, a lot of times, people read the paper, they see it on the news, something's going on in the neighborhood, and they don't like it, and they want to make some kind of a protest. And so they go to the first place. In this case, it was a Planning Commission. And she said, "Well, what about traffic? What about kids?" When a gentleman stood up and said, "Well, this is a drinking establishment, there's a counseling center Keystone nearby, what about that? What about lighting? What about traffic?" All these kinds of things. And at no time were those allowed to be talked about. They said, "Now, wait a minute. We cannot talk about that. That's none of our business. We can only talk about things within 500 feet of a residential area." They would not let those responses from the neighborhood even affect their decision because they were not allowed to talk about those things, and we've sold that many times. "We can only talk about 500 feet within a residential area," even though her arguments, I thought, were sound. They would only entertain 500 feet within a residential area. Could you go to the next slide? Keep going. Go back, there was one that showed them in yellow there, right there. Thank you. So, according to them, the only thing they were allowed to talk about was those yellow boxes that are within 500 feet of the area, of which there are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 areas that is within 500 feet of residential. Well, they broke that in 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 areas. And it still passed unanimously. And I guess my question to them and to you is, what's the point? If you set a standard of 500 feet, shouldn't you hold to that standard? I mean, you, as in the government, came up with the standard. If it was 300 feet, well, it's 300 feet. If it was 1,000 feet, it was 1,000 feet. The standard is there, I'm presuming, for the protection of the people in one way or another, and it's 500 feet. I realize that there may be exceptions to the rule, one of which was brought up Craven at 175 feet. Well, those are exceptions to the rule. Are we then saying that those are now the rule? That now everything's 175 feet? Or are we looking at this as the rule? I believe there are enough places in Sioux Falls that we can enjoy an adult beverage or a gaming. I don't think there's a shortage. I'm not against these institutions personally. I just think that if we have a 500-foot buffer, maybe we should hold to that standard and listen to what these neighbors are saying. Thank you.
Mr. Gould, thank you. Welcome.
Greg Knitzer. The last two speakers were unbelievable. They were great. I just wanted to just say, as you may recall, a couple of weeks ago, I spoke to you about this particular hearing, not knowing until the next day that it was appealed. And I will agree that the meeting was a total travesty. Their due process was violated. I mean, I'm not an attorney, but it was a joke. Just to throw out, and I guess make it clear from the guy who reads the zoning ordinance all the time, in the 1983 ordinance, an off-sale liquor establishment was always a conditional use. So even if it was 3,000 feet away, it always required a conditional use permit. So the model that they went with with shape places was, let's get rid of some unnecessary conditional uses. So if you have a off-sale liquor establishment, for example, you know, a mile away from anything in the middle of a field, why have a conditional use hearing? Nobody cares. But it did not eliminate conditional use permit hearings. It made it what's called a special permitted use. So if it's beyond 500 feet of sensitive uses, they can just get their permit and go. No public hearing. If it's within 500 feet, we end up here, we're at the Planning Commission, to talk about it, because it is assumed that it could be so problematic, and there could be problems, that we need to have real human beings look at it and look and see the context of the neighborhood, what's really there. And I'm not even going to tell you how to vote on this one. I'm just telling you that that is the reason why we are here, and you have wide latitude to impose conditions or deny it. And the neighbors and everybody there was told at that meeting, it couldn't be denied, and you couldn't add conditions. That's not what the code says. It's a personal opinion. So, thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Appreciate that. Welcome.
I have a presentation that I just need to start here. This is one of the reasons why I think video is incredibly important for everything that we're talking about, because in the last month, there have been some video presentations all involved with this issue that I think highlight. And there won't be any sound at some points of it, so don't worry.
Sensitive uses are single-family churches, schools. So if there's a sensitive use, then we're going to have the public hearing.
We're going to see it cut in and out of what the points are, of what Jeff and the different people that are in this video-
But with conditions. So then you really have to, as Planning Commission and the neighbors go, well, what conditions do we want to put on them? And you try to make sure that we're looking at them all the same, depending on whether neighbors show up for the East 26th Street one, but not the 85th and Louise one. We want to make sure that we're consistent and we regulate them the same. How much landscaping they have, what their lighting is, what the signage requirements are, that we make sure that we're consistent throughout, and we don't say, you know what...
What he was doing was taking three pieces of property in very different parts of town, lumping them all together, and trying to say they all were the same thing. And they weren't. We had some people here at a meeting that are here again tonight talking about these real issues in their neighborhood.
On this one, the building has to be yellow, but on this one, you have to put brick on it. And you go, okay, that's not a condition on an on-sale. Those just don't make any sense. Pink flowers on this one, and this one has to have petunias. That doesn't help you mitigate the impacts of an on-sale bar.
These people aren't talking about colors on buildings or planting flowers in front of the building. They want to address real concerns for the enjoyment of their property.
And this is where public input does come in.
Yeah.
I think to really benefit the Planning Commission as well, is because then we better understand concerns and can hopefully help place some conditions that make sense on this.
Conditions really have to mitigate the impact that this is going to have to your neighborhood.
These applications-
And I think it is important that the public does know that that's what we really do listen to. You know, that's when we really do appreciate the public coming forward and saying, these are our concerns. Can you help us out? And, you know, do our best to do that.
Yes.
Sorry, these applications don't occur in a vacuum. There's actual concerns here by all of these people that are here talking tonight. And he's only talking about four conditions, and there's a lot of other things we've learned about.
The way I understand a conditional use permit is the use is allowed with conditions, right?
That's correct. It's an allowed use, and it's allowed with conditions because it's within 500 feet. If it was within 400 feet, we'd never even be talking about it.
Yeah, they would just be able to bill it and be fine. But since it's within 500 feet-
We have to look at the four conditions.
And, yeah, the four conditions we have, you want to go over those just one more time?
Yeah, the four conditions you can look at. You don't get to approve or deny it. You get to look at the four conditions: the parking spaces, the lighting, the soundproofing, and a security management plan. You, as a counsel, can't go in and deny a conditional use permit? And so what we're asking here in this whole process is, once again, they don't occur in a vacuum. They exist on a partial that's in a neighborhood that have real concerns about their neighborhoods. These people were there first. And if we're going to have zoning rules and laws, then we have to pay particular attention to the people that are there and fit the new application into those neighborhoods. And forget about green and red dots and whatever other colors we want to put on maps. These are real neighborhoods that need to be preserved. They were there first. And thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Bruce. Appreciate that. Folks, anybody else want to engage the counsel on this topic? Thank you very much. Counsel, any discussion on this item? Yes, Counsel Kersky.
Is the applicant here?
Sir, would you mind just introducing yourself to the... You've got questions for the applicant.
Please.
Sir, would you mind just introducing yourself to the people of our town?
Sure. Good afternoon. I'm Bryant Solberg at 330 North Main.
Bryant Solberg.
Yes.
Thanks, Bryant.
Welcome, Bryant. Just curious, we heard that you're looking actually for two malt beverage licenses and two retail wine licenses. Are you going to have two casinos here? Are you going to be serving alcohol at both of them? Well, as you know, casinos in Sioux Falls are allowed 10 machines per beer license. And of course, there are times for us when, let's say Friday night or something, where we're, you know, we may be busy or something, we'd like some overflow, so it's that simple. We want a little more room to be able to have, you know, more business. So you are going to have two casinos, and you are going to be serving- Yeah. I assume at this time, or at the beginning of when we open it, I assume our second one, the second one in there, will not have, you know, be open all the time, basically. I would assume, I'm assuming we would have it more on Friday nights and, you know, limited staff, you know, and open on those times we predict will be busy. So you're going to have one location only open a few days a week? I'm sorry. Right, yes. And alcohol would be served at both locations on those days? That's our plan for now, yes. Okay, okay. Thank you.
Counselor Kyle.
For the applicant, why didn't you have the building owner build the space to suit your needs? Why two separate spaces?
Because it's city and state law. We have to have two separate spaces. You know, a casino can only be so big, can only have 10 lottery machines in there.
But you only need one license for the one space?
Right. So we have two licenses in case there's times where we feel we'll be busy, like on a Friday night, and maybe there's, you know, 15 people in there or something.
No question for Bryant, but perhaps maybe Diane or Danny, City Attorney.
Bryant, you can sit down, sir.
May I make a statement? Or should I come back up?
As long as you're here.
Bryant, you had the opportunity when we had asked, but, so, very good. Go ahead.
I just want to, you know, address some of the neighbors' concerns, and, you know, I appreciate their concerns. What I plan to do there is to have a local neighborhood casino. We want it well-run. We don't want problems in there. We don't want, you know, bad situation or a bad environment. We want a safe environment for people that come in there. We don't want to over-serve people. Our business is not to serve beer, over-serve people. Our business is gaming. And so we, I noticed on one of the complaints that they were talking about liquor, we don't serve liquor, and we don't serve off-sale. We're just on-sale beer only and wine. It's in our best interest to run it properly and cater to our customers, which is someone who gambles and not someone who drinks a lot. It's a small, small place. I mean, you know, we have, again, we have seating for, you know, possibly 15 in each bay at each location with 10 video lottery machines in there. So there isn't a lot of people in there at that time. And, you know, and again, we just, I want to reiterate, we don't run it like a bar. And I think this is better than, I mean, it's zoned commercial now, so it's certainly possible for a bar to go in one of these locations, or a restaurant or something like Craven, which takes up a lot of parking. You know, there's a lot of people that, you know, drink beer, more so than in our location. So I just want to reiterate that. And, you know, there's three of these four corners on 85th and Louise that are zoned commercial, and going north. And I think we have to take that in consideration. So, I think that's all I have to say.
Bryant, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Sir, if you'd just stay close by, just in case. Appreciate that. Counsel Jameson, do you have a question for anybody else?
Diane.
Diane, thank you.
Yes. Or Danny, whoever can help me on the couple of questions here. So of the, some of the comments that were made earlier about the four conditions, or the four items for conditional use standards, could we add another, could we add anything to those four? I mean, that's a question.
Answer that, Danny Brown, City Attorney's Office. The City Council, those four standards that were talked about, those are minimum standards.
Minimum.
So the City Council, in their discretion, can add additional considerations.
Makes sense. Perfect. And could we ever deny a conditional use permit?
Yes.
Makes sense. That's it for now.
Counselor, thank you. Yes, Counsel Irvin.
For the applicant, please. When we were talking about the two locations that might just be open a little bit here and there, if you're busy or not, is it all one facility, or is it two actual doors, and one's called Casino A and one's called Casino B?
Right.
Or is it, I know some locations have a front entrance and a back entrance, and use different addresses, but are still on the same building? So would that be the same case?
It's two separate, you know, front entrances, and I would assume rear entrances, two separate locations.
So is there a wall between the facility?
You go out one and go in the other. Go outside, go in the other.
Okay. Thank you. I just want clarification on that.
Counsel Irvin, if I could, though, you did ask a question that I don't think Bryant asked, and that was whether they're going to be two separate businesses with separate titles. Are there going to be two separate businesses with two separate names?
Same name, I, you know, we haven't come up with an, actually, a name of each place, but it'll be a Deuces Casino on one, and the other, you know, you know, it'll probably be Deuces Two or something, you know. Or we, you know, and we plan on having probably one sign over for the two locations, you know. It's almost like a, you know, it's a separate business. We have two separate licenses, you know, we're trying to apply for two separate beer licenses.
But, Mr. Mayor, if I may-
Yes, Counsel Irvin.
What I'm trying to wrap my head around this is, okay, there's 150, one each, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 of those, so you've got those last two on the end that I'm looking at. Is that wall going to remain between the two? Will you have separate federal ID numbers? Not that that's, I'm just, I just see a lot of businesses, casinos, have an entrance of 123 Main Street and then 123 First Ave. And it's, this is the building, and you can get anywhere if you go in the back door or the front door, but there's two different addresses. Is that going to be the same?
Yeah, two separate addresses.
Is it the same building?
It's in the same building. It's, you know, a strip mall.
Is there a wall between?
100%.
Am I, is anybody else understanding, or are you...
A wall going down, you know, between that 100 and 110, you know, 100%, 100% filled in.
Can't get in between each business.
No, you go outside.
And come in.
Go in the-
Gotcha. Thank you.
Counselor Buck.
Thank you. I'm so confused about that piece of it right now. I need to talk about traffic just for a minute, if I can. I looked at those numbers, and I understand if we put a convenience store on that corner, the traffic is, would be much higher. Is that correct, Diane? Is that the gas based on the numbers?
It's based on per thousand square foot, and this is at the PM peak. So, again, video lottery, that's 13.43 per thousand square feet of that business. A fast food restaurant is 52.40 per thousand. Gasoline service station, 97.14 per thousand. And then the comparables that we did with a bar without full-service restaurant, printing and express ship store, a walk-in bank, and movie rental.
and express ship store, a walk-in bake, and movie rental, those are more comparable to what the video lottery casino would be.
So then, I realize that the conditional use concern is 500 feet to those single-family homes, but, but the apartment buildings are way within the 500 feet. They're super, and full of kids. And it's my understanding, then, that that street that is on the graph, or that's on the drawing on the screen right now, is the street that those kids use to get to the bus, to get to school. That's my understanding. So my question is, is there another way out of that apartment building there, the apartment complex on that north side? Or is this the only driveway for that apartment building?
I would think there is something there to the north, but this map doesn't indicate anything further up, so I don't know for sure the answer of that. But I would think typically, we would have another access, in this case, onto Louise
I would do that. Then, could you tell me then too, Diane, what is the building that is to the east of this that we're talking about?
To the east? That is also low-density apartments.
Could I, Mr. Mayor, could I ask the neighbors something? One of the neighbors?
Sure.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Could you, could you answer that question for me about the driveway coming out of the apartments to the north? Because I think it was in your presentation or in one of the letters from the folks, and I so appreciate when neighbors see these things, but.
Rambler Place is the only entrance exit to the 96 Townhomes of Rosecrest.
So if we can just be really, really clear, on the map that's on there now, it's an aerial shot of this piece of property, that driveway that you see that runs into the back of this future casino is the only way in and out of those apartments there?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Thank you.
Counsel Kylie, before I go to you, I do want to, Counsel Staggers or Counsel Anderson Jr., did you have any questions or comments before I go back to Counsel Kylie?
No, go ahead, Mayor.
Counsel Staggers? Thank you, sir. Counsel Kylie?
I would just like clarification of what the applicant had indicated, that the establishment is limited to X number of video lottery machines vice, or is it based on square footage? I'd like to get confirmation on that. I mean, regardless how big the establishment is, he can only have X number of machines? Or is it based on the square footage of the establishment?
Danny, do you know the answer to that question, sir?
No, I don't. I don't know if Jamie Palmer can help me out on that one.
Jamie, would you introduce yourself, please?
Good evening, Jamie Palmer with Licensing. Yes, per license, they are allowed 10 video lottery machines. So in order to have the two casinos, he would have to have a license in both, in order to have 10 machines in both buildings.
Jamie, does size of the building have anything to do with anything?
No, it does not. It has to be per license.
Good. Thank you.
Very good. Good question, sir. Thank you, Jamie. Yes, Counsel Kersky.
Another question for the applicant, if I may.
Ms. Solberg?
Yes.
Will either of these establishments' primary source of revenue come from the sale of tobacco, and will smoking be allowed on the premises?
No, no sale of tobacco, smoking.
Smoking will not be allowed?
No.
Yes, Counsel Jamison?
To move this topic along, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second, Kersky.
It's been a motion to approve this conditional use permit, and it has been seconded. Discussion. Yes, Counsel Jamison?
This corner is a, I would call it a remnant of our old design standards for commercial development. Thank you. The access points for all these corners are going to be a problem. The owner of the property, I'm sure, is challenged in selling them. He's found somebody who's willing to do something. I get that. Traffic will go up if it's something other than the casino, and that's not going to sit well with the neighbors either, but all the other pieces that the neighbors talked about, the ambiance of the neighborhood, just the fact that it's that close to single-family homes, it just doesn't fit. It isn't right. And it sets a new standard. We set the standard with Shape Places. We need to commit to that. The applicant, I'm sure, will find another location somewhere else in our great city to do what he needs and wants to do, but we shouldn't compromise the neighbors for that end. So I just urge you to vote no on this application.
Very, okay, yes.
Just, I don't disagree with what you're saying. I just want to understand, there's going to be a strip mall there anyway. The landowner is selling a strip mall there, right? I just, my concern is, and I'm voting with you, Counsel Jamison, but my concern is that that housing development to the north, I think the way that you said it is exactly right. We have a new standard now. I'm sorry, but we do. And it's time, then, that those housing developments need to figure out how they're going to get their kids on the buses that are away from those commercial areas, whether it's a, whether it's a bar or whatever. We need to figure this out a little bit differently, and this is one of those corners that has the opportunity to change that option going forward. But right now, this is not, it's not a good situation for anything to go in there, so I encourage my colleagues to vote no.
Very good. A rokovo, please.
Counselmember Staggers?
There was an individual who wanted to say something.
And, sir, we're past, you've been a counsel a lot longer than I've been a mayor. We're past that time, sir. Rokovo, please.
Well, it's always good to allow people to speak.
Counselmember Staggers?
Yes.
Anderson?
No.
Erickson?
No.
Urbanback?
No.
Jamison?
No.
Kersky?
No.
Kylie?
No.
That is failed 126.